Because technically, this is a city council work session. And for those of you that have been to city council meetings, you know that we have a training room that we ordinarily have work sessions like this. But we felt it was important tonight because of the topic to be able to meet in a larger room here and offer an opportunity for folks from the community to be here. And I really am excited about the turnout tonight. I want to thank you for the group that's here. We've even got some of our friends from Granbury that have come over to hear what's going to be said tonight. And don't be offended by what I may say in a few minutes, okay?[42.46][42.46](Laughter). We are here tonight, and I'll tell you, though my face might not show it, I am very excited about what we're doing here tonight. This is a big deal for Stephenville. But I think we also understand that we're here tonight because we're struggling in this area. And I think the first step in correcting something, I think you all know that, is to recognize you've got a problem. I mean, otherwise, you're never going to fix anything. And I don't want to offend anybody by saying that we don't have an excellent economic development program in Stephenville, but I'll just tell you, we don't. We are fragmented, but we have something in common. We are fragmented in the sense of being able to execute economic development in Stephenville. Where we are unified, and this is the important key point here, is that we all want to succeed in this area. And why is that? Because it'll benefit our community. And I think as we talk tonight and as the dialogue continues from here, it's going to be very important for ourselves as a community. And what I want to do is encourage everybody to begin, from this point forward, any discussion on economic development on something you have in common on that topic with the person you're talking to. Never start a conversation on what you disagree on, because then you'll never get to the point of common ground. And I think that we, as a community, share a lot of common ground in what we're trying to achieve. And I want to recognize a couple of specific groups that are represented here tonight. We've got the Chamber of Commerce that has got some of their board members here, and also Steadco has a couple of board members. I appreciate y'all being here tonight as well. Just a couple of other quick comments. How important is asking the right question? Pretty important, right? Okay, got it. Where are we now? Where are we going? How do we get there? How do we preserve the uniqueness of Stephenville? How do we realize a unity of purpose? How about the basic question, what is economic development? I think we've got to get a common understanding of what that is before we proceed, even tonight. And I think if you ask that question commonly, people will want to define it kind of vaguely as, I want to attract the business, I want to grow industry, I want to see some homes built, I want some type of construction within the community. You've heard all those things. You also may have heard, hey, let's create some jobs. That's economic development. Well, I'll ask you to consider that economic development is, each of those are a component of economic development. But if you are, if we, as a city, are not increasing the level of prosperity and the quality of life in Stephenville, we do not have economic development. Turning a dollar in town is not economic development. And certainly, dollars leaving town is not economic development. So when we think about it, we need to recognize a couple of things about our community. Our median income right now is around $34,000 a year. That is not good. That is an indicator of the prosperity in this community. That, I believe, should be our key indicator of whether or not economic development is succeeding or not. Is the median income of Stephenville, Texas higher next year than it was this year? That'll tell us whether there is a growth and prosperity in our community. And that is a key indicator of whether economic development is proceeding. Our poverty level is hovering around 25 percent. A quarter of our citizens are at or below the poverty level. That's another indicator. So economic development is not about Stephenville having exponential growth. It's not about attracting a box store. It's about raising the prosperity of the citizens that live here. And so as we're thinking about economic development and how to generate an economic development program for our community, the advantage we have is that we've got a clean slate, because we really don't have a program right now. And so part of our task as a council is, I think, to partner with the community in how to do that. And I think all the council members would share with me that we're very optimistic about where we're headed, because we have a very diverse economy. We're a top 10 percent in agriculture in the state of Texas. We have a university with Tarleton State that is a huge economic impact. But it also is a key resource for that prosperity factor in that it produces a tremendously qualified workforce every year. And so our ability to retain the talent of Tarleton State and Ranger College that's produced in our community is a huge benefit for us as a community. We've got a strong manufacturing base that is an envy of other communities our size. We are a regional medical center, and we're regional retail. So you've got five areas within our economy that we can talk about as avenues to create partnerships to generate economic development in our community. And Granbury, this is where you come into this, because economic development is also about competition. The competition is not within the city limits of Stephenville, and we've got to recognize that. No, the competition is Granbury, Weatherford, Cleburne, Mineral Wells, Brownwood, from a regional perspective. But from a university perspective, our competition's Commerce, Canyon, Kingsville, Corpus Christi, Colleen. We need to make Stephenville the premier city that the Texas A&amp;M system sees when they make decisions about Tarleton State University, because it is the lifeblood of the future of our community. And so all of those things are important, I think, for us to consider as we're talking about and considering economic development. And I'll end with this, because I want to come back to this point later. I don't, and I'll include myself in this, nobody in the room right now knows what the structure of Stephenville is going to look like six months from now, about how we're going to execute economic development. And so I would encourage all of us to go into the discussion tonight with an open mind about how this element of the answer can be successful, or be considered at least. Because it's my experience that when you try to do something as diverse as economic development with only one component of a broad base, you will be unsuccessful. And so it's my belief, and I want to encourage as a council as we hear tonight's presentation, to think, how can we create partnerships within the county, with the chamber, with Steadco, with Tarleton and Ranger, as we hear tonight's presentation? Now, we wouldn't be here tonight if it weren't for some yeoman's work of some council members, notably Boyd Wagner, who took it upon himself to try to seek out Mr. Jeff Moore this evening. And I want to commend Boyd for his efforts of trying to help educate the council on what we need to know, to be informed about what we're going to learn about this evening. And with that, let me just turn the floor over to Mr. Wagner and let him say a few words and then introduce Mr. Moore. So Boyd?
Yeah, okay. I have a, I want to start out with some real basic statistics, talking about competition. The five cities that we kind of compete with, you might say, Brownwood, Mineral Wells, Granbury, Cleburne, and Stephenville is five of them. You take a look at the median family income, we're dead last. All four of them beat us. Ranges from $51,000 down to us at $34,000. Percent of people living in poverty, we're dead last. It starts at 9.3 percent and goes all the way down to us at 29 percent. That's almost a third. And it's 9 percent, 17, 20, and 22. And on the cost of living, believe it or not, we're second highest cost of living. So we're not making much money, but we got the second highest cost of living. Something's wrong, you know? And something needs to change. And the one thing that these four towns that are all beating us have in common, that we don't have in common with them, is they have economic development corporations that are using some sales tax money to develop business. And, you know, if people think you can get people to come to your town without doing something for them, but let me back up a minute. I think the Texas Constitution prohibits cities giving anybody anything for a long time. They've changed that. The game has changed. Every town within 60 miles has one of these, except us. Toner has them, Lublin has them, Haco has them, Strong has them. Then Brownwood just got a big grocery store to come in there, and they gave them, they had an economic development corporation, they gave them $350,000 in incentives. I don't much like that, but it worked. And Roanoke did similar things over there. So I started looking around for somebody to know something, and Jeff Moore's name came up everywhere I looked. In fact, we had our little orientation in the videos, and he was talking. I went to Irving to another deal and asked the guy up there who was the best one about it, and he was. And here, he's got his stuff. He's the main speaker at the Texas Economic Development Council. I told him while he was there, remind me, I sued a railroad once and I put on a Railroad Expert, and he'd been around railroads 70 years. And the railroad lawyer got to him and said, so you think you're a railroad expert? And he says, if I ain't, I don't know who is.[695.44][695.44](Laughter). If he don't know what he's talking about, I don't know who did, done, on this subject. So this Jeff Moore is a lawyer from Richardson. He spends most of his time, you look at his resume, his number one thing that he does is economic development. So he knows what he's talking about. Jeff?
Thank you. Thank you, Boyd. Thank you, Mayor, Council. Appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening to talk about the Type A, Type B sales tax. In particular, I mean, that's one component of, you know, economic development, but it is a, you know, as Boyd indicated, a number of cities, you know, use that sales tax for economic development purposes. I was first introduced, by way of background, I was first introduced to the sales tax back in 1999. I'd been a city attorney, assistant city attorney down in Austin for about six and a half years, and then went to the Attorney General's Office where I was introduced to the sales tax. I was in the municipal affairs section, and we would always get a lot of calls from city officials on the sales tax. And so that turned into doing training on the sales tax. In 2001, a bill got passed mandating some training on the sales tax. And so at the time, I was, I guess, instructed to, you know, to come up with the training seminars, to work with the Comptroller's Office, I worked with the Department of Economic Development at the time to formulate those seminars, and I've been doing those ever since. The materials that you have there are the paper from the sales tax training seminars. And I've geared it a little bit towards, you know, your situation, to kind of go into the introductory, you know, what can you use it on, you know, what is the sales tax, you know, just some of the questions I think will come up if you proceed down that path. And so there's a number of questions in there. The PowerPoint is numbered. It's numbered based on the paper. So for the audience, you're going to see the, you know, the PowerPoint jump. That's based on the paper. And so, yeah, if you want to follow along in the paper, just, you know, follow that, and it probably has more information within the paper. And I guess, I don't want to drone on too long and bore everybody, and I thought, you know, maybe 45 minutes, but, you know, if y'all have questions, you know, I'll try to get all the questions answered. And with that, you know, I just kind of turn into the PowerPoint. You know, the first slide here, you know, what is it? It's a sales tax for economic development. There's two types, Type A, Type B. You may hear me say 4A, 4B. Years ago, it used to be called 4A, but it's now called Type A Sales Tax. And then there was what was called Section 4B, or 4B is now called Type B Sales Tax. So if you hear me kind of interchangeably use those terms, just, you know, try to keep up. You know, the sales taxes are implemented, you know, to do economic development. The first requirement is the city has to hold a sales tax election, so the voters voted in. And, you know, what you have to do is, you have to call an election with the, you know, you have to do it on uniform election date, May or November. And so at the next election, the earliest you could do it would be next May, and you'd have to call that at least, call the election at least 71 days prior to that uniform election date. And I think you're looking at end of February, February 27th, 28th, thereabouts, that'd be the deadline to call the election. You'd have to call the election by ordinance. Now, the sales tax, you know, in the state of Texas, you cannot impose more than eight and a quarter sales tax rate. Six and a quarter goes to the state of Texas. And so your local sales and use taxes can never exceed 2 percent. And so most cities have, you know, the one cent, you know, general, municipal, and all these sales taxes get voted in. Some have a fire control, crime control, library districts, sales tax for property tax relief, some have 4A or Type A, Type B. And so you vote in these different sales tax, but bear in mind that you can never exceed that 2 percent local. And so that's always a, you know, kind of a, at the sales tax training seminars, when we go through the sales tax, you know, we get frequent questions on, you know, we're looking at converting from one tax to the other. Can we do that? And, you know, the question's going to be, you know, what's your current rate? If it's eight and a quarter, you're going to have to reduce something to adopt, you know, either Type A or Type B. The next slide here, just kind of an illustration, gives you the number of cities. These are from 2011 figures, based on the, the Comptroller has to put out a biannual report every two years, just kind of listing the, you know, the sales tax, what it's being used for, and who has it. And based on this 2011 report, there's, you know, 586 cities, 101 have the Type A, you know, about, a little bit more than three times that, 367 have the Type B. And then you have 118 cities that have both. And, you know, so they have the ability within the 2 percent to do both sales tax. And, you know, the bottom bullet point there, you know, 697 cities, or, excuse me, corporations generated, you know, $573 million in revenue in 2011. So that's a lot of revenue that gets generated for economic development. And with that, that catches the legislature's attention as well. There's always amendments to the statute. And I guess that's maybe job security for me to do the training, because the definition's always changing a little bit. And so, but, you know, it's always, there's always legislation every session to address the Type A, Type B sales tax, you know, just given that revenue that gets generated. Number five here, you know, if you look at, you know, if you want to go down that road and do the Type A or Type B sales tax, you have to call an election. It has to be on a uniform election date. You know, those, I remember a number of years ago, it used to be four of them. I think Cindy's probably glad there's two. I'm glad, too. There's only two now, May or November. And so you'd have to call the election if you're looking at, you know, implementing one of the sales tax. And again, there's, the election code keeps changing, but currently, for the May election, you'd have to call it at least 71 days prior to the uniform election date. And for a November election, it's 78 days prior to that uniform election date. Question eight here, you know, what rate can you adopt? Well, first of all, you can never exceed the 2 percent of the local sales and use tax. I think you've got a 1 percent, and then you've got a sales tax for property tax relief, I think at a half cent. And then I think the county has a half cent. I believe that's the lay of the land on the local sales tax. For both the Type A or Type B, you can implement the tax in increments of one eighth. So one eighth, you know, one quarter, three eights, or a half. Again, all your local sales and use taxes can never exceed 2 percent. Now, you generate, this is getting into some of the technical requirements that, you know, you get the sales tax, you get it up and running, and, you know, some of the questions that have come up, you're looking at maybe helping a grocery store, retailer, manufacturer, you know, what have you. With the statute, the statute lays out some requirements that you have a, what's called a performance agreement with the business. There's some minimal requirements that you have to put in there, just that you have to indicate that the jobs should be created or retained, the capital investment they're going to make. And then, you know, a penalty if they don't achieve what they said they're going to do, you know, if the business said they're going to create 10 jobs, they only create five. Your contract should say, you know, what the penalty is, and as city and EDC, you get to decide what the penalty is. But there should be some sort of penalty in there. 24, you know, Type A, Type B corporations, they do a lot of, I guess, promotional activity. And one of the questions that comes up, and this slide really starts to illustrate two points, that, you know, basically, here, you know, can you hire a third-party recruiter to do business recruitment? And what the statute provides is that, yeah, you can, if you're going to hire some third-party to do the business recruitment for you, you've got to have a written contract approved by the board. It has to be in writing. There's a penalty in here if you don't have it, that the Attorney General's Office can come after a civil penalty, up to $10,000, and they can bring that action in Travis County District Court, or, you know, here in Erath County. And so that's, and the second point from that slide is, this is the one area where the Attorney General's Office has oversight. When we started doing the training seminars a number of years ago, that was kind of a big concern, is it, does, you know, does the Comptroller's Office control, does the, you know, Attorney General's Office control? And they have very limited oversight. It's a local issue, it's a local sales tax. Voters can vote it in, voters can vote it out. And so for the most part, it's a local issue. There are a couple areas where the Comptroller's Office, the Attorney General's Office has oversight. For the Attorney General's Office, this is the one area. That, and I'd add that they've never had to implement this, or, you know, go after an EDC for failure to have a written contract. And this got passed a number of years ago, given some allegations of one neighboring city was luring companies out of one city into a neighboring city, and there was quote-unquote "cash" being paid under the table to do the business recruitment. And so the bill got passed to say, hey, if you're going to pay something of value to do business recruitment, there needs to be a written contract, so there's a paper trail to show what's happening. 28, can a Type A or Type B corporation undertake projects outside their city limits? The sales tax is limited to your city limits. And so if you get it implemented, it can only be imposed in the city limits. And naturally, you know, thought would be that you can only, you know, use the money in the city limits. And that's not the case. You can actually do a project outside the city limits. If you're in the unincorporated area of the, you know, of the county, what the statute provides is that you get the Commissioner's Court approval to do the project. So let's say you have a manufacturer, they're out in the unincorporated area, yeah, you could provide that sales tax revenue, provide that assistance to them, get Commissioner's Court approval. And I've had to go to two of those hearings before, and the Commissioner's Courts were always confused, I guess, given the agenda item, that they thought you're hitting them up for money to do economic development. And when you explain to them that the statute says, we've got to get your blessing to do economic development in the county, and you don't have to put any money into it, you know, they usually readily approve the order or the, you know, the resolution authorizing the project within the county. And so that's a, you know, kind of a requirement within the statute. Now, 47, I'm going to kind of jump in here, and then I'm going to go back, at the end, I'm going to go back into what you can spend the money on, but jumping a little forward in the paper, you know, 47 here, who administers and oversees the Type A, Type B sales tax? And there are nonprofit corporations, the economic development corporations, referred to as EDCs, they're nonprofit corporations. So what has to happen is if the voters vote in the sales tax, basically, the council, you would canvass the election results. And then the next item would be to get, basically, articles in corporation, now referred to as certificates of formation, get those filed, get those sent off to the Secretary of State creating that corporation. And the reason for that is that, you know, these corporations, you know, if they, let's say they did a bond, and the classic example would be the ballpark in Arlington, for the city of Arlington. That was the first Type B project, and really, that was the reason the Type B statute got written, was for the city of Arlington and the ballpark in Arlington. Well, they issued all this debt, you know, bonds to do the stadium. And that debt was not the city's debt, it became that nonprofit corporation's debt. And so that's the reason you have to set up the, or one reason why you set up the nonprofit corporation, that, you know, these are obligations of the corporation. And now, having said that, there's a lot of oversight city council has over the nonprofit corporation, that basically, you know, as city council, you get to appoint the board members, you get to remove the board members. The bottom bullet point here, you get to approve all expenditures of the corporation. And so there's, you're very much, I guess, attached to the hip, but the corporation, from a legal perspective, is separate and distinct, but does have to get approval from city council, and city council gets to appoint and remove the board members. 49, does city council approve all expenditures? And the answer is yes, and I've given you kind of the statutes there, that, you know, what the statute provides, and it's just a one-sentence deal, it says that city council get, it uses the term "the unit." The unit approves all programs and expenditures, and that means city council. And so you get to approve all the expenditures. The bottom bullet point there, the Attorney General opinion dealt with a promotional expenditure, and the Attorney General's Office noted there that, yes, that, you know, the city council gets to approve or disapprove of promotional expenditures as well. And during, you know, the seminars I do around the state, we get a lot of questions on the approval. Yeah, there's a lot of, I guess, issues that come up with the approval process, and that's all that the statute says. You get to approve the expenditures, it doesn't say when or how. You know, a lot of, I say, most EDCs I know, that they prepare a budget, they prepare it, you know, simultaneously with the city, and so, and then city council approves the budget. And so if the budget laid out all these different projects and different expenditures, that could be the approval via the budget. Yet, you know, obviously, throughout the year, you may have a prospect come to town that wasn't in the budget. And so those items would probably, you know, come to council for approval, you know, throughout the year. And so, you know, the approvals, the approval's also going to be done through the bylaws. When you get the articles in corporations done, and Secretary of State approves them, and you're incorporated, the next step is to get bylaws passed for the corporation. And that corporate, you know, the corporate bylaws, you can address certain approval of expenditures. I'm starting to see where a lot of EDCs are putting in their bylaws that expenditures below a certain dollar amount are deemed approved. As city council, we've got enough on our agenda, we don't need to see those items. Everything above a certain dollar amount, you've got to bring it to us for approval. You can do that in the bylaws. As council, you get to approve the bylaws, and you get to approve any amendments to bylaws. So you have that control or that latitude. If there's some de minimis expenditures that, you've got enough on your agenda, you don't want the board coming to you to buy a box of pencils, I mean, you can say, yeah, you know, you know, that's deemed approved, and, you know, we don't need to see it. Now, 53, you know, does city council appoint the directors? And the answer is yes, you get to appoint them. Now, the way the state law reads is that for a Type A corporation, that you have to have at least five board members on the Type A corporation. For the Type B, it's seven. There's no more, no less. And then with both, you get to appoint, and you can remove with or without cause. Now, who receives the sales tax proceeds? The way the statute is written, and there's a couple things, maybe it's a good point to bring this up, that when you have the sales tax election, you canvass the results. And then, basically, you have to report that to the Comptroller's Office, that canvassing. And the way that the statute reads and the administrative code reads is that if you report it based on calendar quarters, so let's say you have the election next May, and you report it by June 30th, that's the end of the second calendar quarter. What the Comptroller's Office does is, they say, well, once you get it reported within a calendar quarter, we don't impose the tax for the next calendar quarter. So if that May election, if you got the results to them by June 30th, then they will not impose that sales tax from basically July 1 through September 30th. That's the third calendar quarter. Then starting the next calendar quarter, they would start imposing the sales tax. And there, you don't, you wouldn't see revenue that, you know, the sales tax gets remitted by the vendors, it goes to the Comptroller's Office. The Comptroller retains it for about six weeks, and then they make their monthly allocations. And so really, you would start generating the, I guess, Type A or Type B sales tax revenue in October, but you would not see that revenue to revenue in October, but you would not see that revenue till December. And what the statute provides is that, that the comptroller has to turn that money over to the city, and then the city has to deliver it to the EDC. And so, but by statute, the comptroller, they're done when they deliver that sales tax revenue to the city, and then the city is supposed to promptly turn that over to the corporation. Now, the board members, you know, how long do they serve? For type A, there's a lack of precision within the statute, and what it provides is that one term cannot exceed six years. For type B, it's two years, you get two-year terms. Now, I guess, yeah, the next slide covers the term limits. Can you be reappointed? Yes, you can be reappointed any number of terms. State law does not address, you know, how long a board member can serve. I do see, you know, some EDCs, some cities put in term limits for their board members, but, you know, that's not a state law requirement, so, one term for type A cannot exceed six years, but I would say normally, it's probably two or three years, or four years, is what I see as, as a normal term for type A, and, but you could be reappointed any number of Now, once you have the corporation up and running, basically, they get to appoint the officers, the board, they get to decide who's president, secretary, or other officers. This next slide basically says, you know, if you're certificate of formation, or the articles in corporation don't address a term, those officers are going to elect, do annual elections to see who's president, secretary, so on and so forth. Make sure I'm on the right slide here. Sixty-six, residency requirement. Now, you know, if you implement the type A sales tax, there's not a residency requirement for the board members. Now, that's not to say maybe, you know, city council, you want to impose that, or you put it in the articles, or put it in the bylaws, but state law does not require any sort of, you know, city residency for a type A board member. Now, for type, type B board members, it's based on your population, less than, less than 20,000, excuse me, over 20,000, you've got to be a resident of the city, less than 20,000 in population, then basically, you've got to be a resident of the city, a county in which the major portion of the city is located, and that's for a city in more than one county. And then, there's a third bullet point there that was written for HEICO Texas, that you've got to reside at a place that's within 10 miles of the eligible city's boundaries, and is in a county bordering the county, in which a major part of the area of the eligible city is located. I don't know what all that means, but, but you've got to be pretty close for HEICO, you've got to be, not in that county, you've got to be in the neighboring county, but you're within 10 miles. And so, that's the residency requirement for type B. Now, there's a quorum requirement for the type A and type B boards, and basically, it's going to be a majority of the board. If you have a five-member type A board, it's three of the five is a quorum. For type B, it's four, four of the seven. To take action, you just need a majority vote where you have a quorum gathered. So, for type B, let's say you have five members at the meeting, basically, you just need a three vote, three to two, and it passes, just a majority vote where you have a quorum established to take action. Are the board members paid? The answer is no, they're not paid. That's excluding any employees of the corporation, let's say like an executive director, but the board members are not paid, but the statute does provide that they get reimbursed for actual expenses, you know, in performance of their duties. Seventy-three, are you subject to the Open Meetings Act? Both type A, type B are subject to the Open Meetings Act. And so, that's, and what the Development Corporation Act provides for type A, type Bs, that all their meetings have to be in the city limits. And I guess, back in 2011, I guess somebody heard that, I guess, that speech so often that they got it amended, it was done for the city of Clifton, where they got the statute amended to say that, you know, for type A, type Bs located within a county with a population of less than 30,000, for county population, you know, they could conduct their meetings anywhere within the county. So, type A, type Bs, they're limited to having their meetings within, within the city limits. Seventy-five, are they subject to the Public Information Act? Yes, they're, they're like the city, they're subject to open meetings, they're subject to the Public Information Act, yet, you know, they're a nonprofit corporation. And just lastly, on some procedural issues, and this kind of draws a distinction between type A and type B, and the latter part of the slideshow will also illustrate the, kind of, the difference between type A, type B. Ninety-four here, you know, do type A corporations have to conduct public hearings on type A projects? And the answer is no, that, there's a couple exceptions, if you're doing a sports venue project, or if you're doing the, you know, type B project, that's usually a public park project, that you don't have a hearing requirement. Type As, they just put it as an agenda item, vote it up or down, get it over to council, let council vote it up or down, you have a written performance agreement, and you're off and running. Ninety-six, must type B corporations conduct a public hearing prior to funding projects? And the answer is usually yes, and I've got that up there, that, for a number of years, it was always yes, type Bs, you always had to do a public hearing on all projects, but that was amended back in 2009 to say, for, for those cities with a population of less than 20,000, that, if a type A can do that project, then a type B under 20,000 in population can do that same project without holding a public hearing. And those are usually, if you're assisting a manufacturer, a warehouse project, under the statute, they refer to that as primary job employers, and so, if you're assisting with those sort of primary job employers, then you don't have to hold a public hearing. Also, if you're doing certain infrastructure projects, it could be water sewer, electric drainage for business, if you're, streets and roads, if you're doing some sort of infrastructure project, then you don't have to hold a public hearing. Type Bs, they still have some procedural hoops to walk through. They're required to publish notice of the project, so regardless of whether they have to hold a public hearing, they have to publish notice of the project. They then have to wait 60 days before they fund the project. And again, this statute, the type B, was written for the ballpark in Arlington, the city of Arlington, and basically, that 60-day window gives the voters a right to get a petition together to object to a project. And I think it's only come up once throughout the years, but, yeah, basically, that's for any project, there's this 60-day, where you publish notice, and you wait 60 days before you fund it. It gives the public a right to object to that project, to get a petition together, and say, and if that were submitted, you have to put it on a ballot at a uniform election date, and you can't fund that project until, you know, the voters vote on the issue. Ninety-nine, do you have to publish notice for type As? Type As, again, you don't have public hearings, so you don't have to publish notice, with three exceptions, and that being a sports venue project, if you're doing a type B project, and then usually, it maintenance and operating costs related to that type B project. Now, the last slide on this, this part, then I'm going to jump back to, you know, what can you spend the money on? What's the difference between the two? One oh-two here, you know, when must a type B corporation publish notice? And basically, what the statute provides is that you always have to publish notice of projects, and that you wait 60 days before you fund it. And so, that procedural is a kind of a big difference between type A, type B. I don't know if that factors into, into your decision-making, if you decide to go with one sales tax or another. This last two slides are basically where the comptroller has oversight, every year, every February, you have to do a report to the comptroller's office on the sales tax. It is a one-page report by statute, they wrote it into the statute, it said, it has to be one page, can't be anymore. Now, the instructions are on the back, and the forms on the front, and you can do it online now, but there's a, there's a report that's required, and I'll go back here, and if you don't file the report, the comptrollers can go after for a $200 fine. I don't think the comptroller's office has ever had to impose that, that's not to say people have filed timely. You know, I guess, you know, they send out reminders, saying, hey, we're still looking for that report, but, you know, that's an area where the comptroller's office has oversight. The other area where the comptroller's office has oversight is, if you don't do the sales tax training, that's mandated, it's required every two years, for certain, it basically has to be either, you know, city attorneys, city secretary, city manager, one person from the city side's supposed to do the training every two years, and then one person from the EDC, and the way the statute reads, the one that has the day-to-day activities of the corporation, or the executive director, that person has to do the training every two years. And that's another area where the comptroller's office has oversight. Now, this is probably where it's going to be most helpful in any sort of decision-making, you know, what, you generate this, you get the, you know, the sales tax passed, you start collecting it, the comptroller's remitting it back to you, and you're getting the sales tax revenue, and, you know, it's going into the fund for the type A or type B corporation. What can you use it for? And some cities, I think it was page two or number two, where I noted that the cities, you've got about 101 that have type A, you've got about 367 that have type B. And the type A is more of a, what a lot of people refer to as a heavy industry, where it's traditional economic development, it's for manufacturing, it's for warehousing, it's for what you call primary job employers. And this slide up here just kind of illustrates the types of projects that you can fund with the sales tax revenue, and what the statute provides is that it has to create or retain a primary job. That's defined in the statute to mean, basically, is it creating or retaining a manufacturing, a warehousing job? And basically, you can assist with manufacturing facilities, industrial facilities, you know, distribution centers, warehouses, you know, primary job training facility for, by institutions of higher education, so higher ed, if you want to help with a primary job training facility for that higher ed, you can assist there. Regional or national corporate headquarters, you could provide assistance if it's a regional or national corporate headquarters. Now, this next slide, not everything has to create or retain a primary job under, under the statute. And so, there are some projects that you can do, that, it could be, it could be retail, it could be, you know, a restaurant, it could be the, you know, the grocery store, it could be that, that sort of assistance. And, and here, it's limited to job training, you can pay for job training, and I'll go through that here in a minute, there's some statutory requirements. You can pay for targeted infrastructure, and the next slide will drill down a little bit into that targeted infrastructure. You can assist with a career center, provided it's not located within the taxing jurisdiction of junior college district. You can help with certain airports, port facilities, I don't think port facilities will work here, but down on the coast, they'll work. Also, you can do, you know, if mass transit was an issue, that was added, I think Senator Shapiro up in the Dallas area got that passed a number of years ago. And then, this last session, dormitory for, really, this is for the, down in Port Arthur area, to assist with dormitories for Port Arthur. Now, that second bullet point says certain targeted infrastructure, that's the list of items that you can assist with infrastructure. You know, basically, you can do the streets and roads, you know, rail spurs, water sewer, electric drainage, site improvements, internet improvements, you know, you've got telecommunications. And what, under the statute, what the statute says is, if the board of directors determine it's going to promote new or expand existing business, so, it's only business development. If you think it's going to do business development, then, then you can, it's not primary jobs or manufacturing, it's not limited to that, it's any sort of business. Could be Home Depot, it could be a grocery store, you know, anything in between, it could be a manufacturing facility. But if you think it's going to promote business development, that's the list of targeted infrastructure you could help them with. You've got a manufacturer going outside the city limits, and, you know, they're looking at, you know, they need to get the water and sewer line out to them to put in their facility. You could pay for the water and sewer line, and for the streets and roads, you know, to get to that manufacturing facility. Now, skip sixteen, I mean, there's some bracketed statutes here, sixteen's not going to be applicable, it's for those 7,500 or less in population. And so, that's pretty much the type B, or, excuse me, type A projects that you can do with the type A sales tax. Now, the type B is basically everything type A can do, and you have a few additional projects you can undertake. And so, I've given you the list, again, that list looks very similar to, you know, two or three slides earlier, that basically, you can do the manufacturing, you know, research and development, the transportation facilities, distribution centers, but you also have there, down at the bottom, that, you know, you can assist with public safety facilities, provided it promotes, you know, it's going to help with primary jobs. Now, that public safety facility, you know, could that be a fire station? Yeah, it could be a fire station, but it should be in a commercial area. An example would be, you've got a manufacturer coming to town, and you, you know, you need the fire equipment to fight their kind of fire, that you could provide that fire station next to that manufacturer, or in that commercial area, provided it's going to promote, basically, primary jobs, warehousing or manufacturing jobs. Now, this slide looks very similar to the type A, and so, I'll just kind of go through it real quick, I mean, you've got the same job training classes, you have the targeted infrastructure. Down at the bottom, the last two bullet, bullet points, that's, that's a big distinction between type A and type B. This, I guess, what the fourth bullet point, the second from the bottom, that's the provision for the ballpark in Arlington, or the city of Arlington, that, you know, professional amateur sports, athletic facilities, entertainment, tourists, convention facilities, public parks, you know, open space improvements. That's where type B can assist with parks, they can assist with entertainment, they could do, you know, Frisco, the minor league ballpark, I think Corpus did a similar minor league, you can do, you know, you know, amateur or professional sporting facilities under the type B sales tax. At the bottom, it says you can do affordable housing. Affordable housing is defined by statute, it has to meet the federal statute, that is the one and only area that either the type A or type B could assist with housing. I mean, type A can't, type B can, with affordable housing. Type A would have to put it to the voters to do affordable housing. And so, those are the, probably, the big distinction between type A, type B, or those last two projects. Some other projects, water supply facilities. That was written for St. Angelo a number of years ago, to help with certain water facilities, and that requires voter approval, if you're looking to do, you know, some sort of water supply facility, you'd have to go to election to get voter approval to do that particular project. And then, the last three are very similar to type A. So, type B, you've got a few more projects that you can undertake. Number fourteen, this is a very popular provision, I refer to it as a kind of a retail compromise. For a number of years, there was the thought that you could not assist with retail, with the type A or type B sales tax, that it had to be primary jobs, it had to be manufacturing or, you know, warehouse, industrial facilities. And the way the statute got amended over the number of years, there was some room to assist with business development, and that could be retail, that could be, yeah, some retailers, some restaurants, some grocery store, it just has to be business development. This statute was added, say, in 2003, and basically, what it says is, for those under 20,000 in population, that basically, that, you know, the board of directors can provide land, buildings, equipment, facilities, expenditures, targeted infrastructure improvements. So, you've got a laundry list of stuff you can provide, expenditures, basically, provide money, financial assistance. What the board of directors have to determine is that it's going to promote new or expanded business development. So, if you think it's going to promote new or expanded business development, the board of directors could provide land, buildings, equipment, facilities. Council, you still get to approve the expenditures. This statute is unique in that they put in some procedural requirements, that they say, what the statute says is, if it's over $10,000, council, you have to do two readings of a resolution to approve it. And so, that's, that's kind of a distinction from most of your other projects, if you're going to rely on this statute to do the project, then, yeah, it takes two readings of a resolution, if it's over $10,000. Let's see, the primary job, I talked about, some require the creation or retention of primary jobs, some projects do not, it's a defined term added in 2003. Basically, they're supposed to be exporting something, they're supposed to be exporting a product regionally, nationally, statewide, internationally, that infuses new, you know, new dollars into your community. And then, they have to meet North American Industrial Classification Sector Code. These are some broad categories. These are some broad categories, these North American Industrial Classification Sector Codes, and it could be crop production, you know, animal production, you have, the traditional ones are manufacturing, you know, warehousing. Those are probably the primary areas that EDCs look to fund. Down towards the bottom, you've got some interesting ones, that you've got telephone call centers, you've got correctional institutions, they meet the definition of primary job, yet I don't know what they're exporting. Now, I do know that, we mentioned that at one of the seminars, it was last year, for the correctional institution, somebody raised their hand and said, well, they're exporting justice. And so, you know, maybe that's it, but, you know, one community, they wanted that added to assist with a prison, and so, they got that added into the definition of primary job. And so, those are projects. And under the statute, basically, you can assist in three areas. You've got projects, you've got promotional expenditures, and then, you've got job training. And just, you know, next, I'm going to cover the promotional expenditures. And basically, yeah, the statute just says you can provide up to 10% of your revenue for promotional activity, doesn't define it, that's a lot of the problem with the statute, a lot of the terms are undefined. I guess that led to the training that's mandated. But type A, type B, both, they can expend up to 10% of their revenue for promotional activity. And this attorney general opinion that I have listed here was written for the city of Hutto, down near the Austin area, their mascot is the Hutto Hippo. And a number of years ago, they inquired, I guess it was the mayor, that wanted to put the world's largest fiberglass hippo on the high school grounds, and wanted the corporation to pay for it, and thought that would create tourism, that people would come visit, to come look at the world's largest fiberglass hippo. And so, it got posed as an attorney general question, actually, three questions, that could you fund a fiberglass hippo as a promotional expenditure? And what the attorney general noted, that, you know, the statute doesn't define promotion, they kind of got into the dictionary, they say you give it its normal everyday usage. And what they said for promotional activity, it should publicize or advertise the city for business development. That's kind of the test for promotional activity. If it's going to publicize or advertise the city for business development, then you can fund it. Is that, you know, helping with a chamber event, a parade, or, you know, you've got all these events, you know, that's, you know, some communities say that, yeah, it's going to help with business recruitment. And so, if it's going to publicize or advertise the city for business development, you can fund it. And so, for that opinion, the AG didn't say no, they said, well, it's for the board of directors to make that decision, it should publicize or advertise the city for business development, and city council can approve or disapprove of it. They get to, you know, approve all expenditures, so a city council, you get to approve or disapprove of promotional expenditures as well. And then, you know, the related question was, well, you know, it's 10% per year, what if you didn't spend any of it the last three years? This year, could you spend 40%? And the answer was no, it's a 10% annual limitation. That's not to say, let's say, you know, just this last fiscal year, let's say you spent 9%, you set aside 10% for promotion, you only spent nine, now the new fiscal year's coming around, you're allocating a new 10%. You could still roll that unexpended 1% over into promotion and allocate a new 10% for this fiscal year, but, yeah, just not having addressed it at all, and then try to do 40% because you hadn't funded anything for four years, it doesn't work that way. And so, that's promotion. And so, yeah, the EDCs will spend up to 10% per year doing promotional activity. And then, lastly, the job training, that you can pay for job training, it does not have to be a primary job employer, it could be retail, you know, it could be some business restaurant, if they need to do some job training, it could be Toyota manufacturing, they need some training, you know, somewhere in between. But what the statute provides is that the corporation, that you basically have to enter into a written contract with that business enterprise, that business has to commit in writing to increase its payroll or create new jobs that are going to pay the prevailing wage for that occupation in your area. And if, contractually, if they're willing to do that, you can pay for the job training. And so, those are, you know, they're kind of the distinctions or the differences and probably the most frequently encountered issues that come up at the training. And with that, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions. Now, I think that was 45 minutes, too.
Yeah, it was. It was 42. You were trying to get a break.
Yes, sir.
Do you have a couple of questions? You mentioned the council appointing directors of type A and type B, and establish term limits on both. Can a person serve on a type A and a type B board at the same time?
They could, and that comes up occasionally, provided, you know, they meet the residency requirement for type B. Type A, there's no residency requirement, but type B, there is, and, you know, provided they meet the residency for the type B, yeah.
Okay. The other one, there's several references to population of 20,000 or more, we're just, we're right there on the verge.
You're 17, I think.
Well...
Nineteen, three forty.
Nineteen, nineteen.
So, is that based on census, is that based on estimates?
Yeah, there's a, what they call Co-construction Act, and when you have population in there, you go to the most recent decennial census. So, basically, you'd go with the 2010 census figures, unless you've made some finding that you've got a certain population. If you passed a resolution or ordinance saying, hey, we got 25,000, you're going to be, yeah, you're probably stuck there, but otherwise, you go with the latest decennial census figures.
To get the, if we're under 20,000, and I think we are now, would that be in it, well, anyway, would you recommend, I know you don't know everything you need to know about this town, but would you recommend if we had one, to do a B corporation or an A, and if so, tell us which one you would recommend for this town?
Well, I think the type B, when you look at the numbers, I think it's on page, or number two of the paper, that, and every year, or every two years, we see the type A numbers go down a little bit, cities are converting from type A to type B, that you have more doing the type B because there's more projects you can do. Now, having said that, there's a lot of communities that, they're steadfast and they're going to stay at type A because they think that does more traditional economic development, it does manufacturing and primary jobs for the most part, and based on that policy decision that they want to stay as type A. Because in some communities, type, you know, type B becomes basically the parks fund, you know, for the Parks Department, and they don't want to do that either. So, they, you know, they want the type A and just to do the traditional heavy economic development. But if you look at the numbers, most cities are going to type B.
Can't B do almost everything A can do anyway?
Correct. B can do everything A can do, A can't do everything B can do.
Okay, so, there's not really any real reason to have an A for a town like this, is it? If you can do everything an A can do and some things an A can't do?
Right. I mean, B gives you more projects to undertake. Now, you have some procedural issues, you got, you know, you got, you know, for some smaller communities, you know, that residency might be an issue for some, you know, type B boards, but, and, you know, publishing notice and holding public hearings may scare some, but, yeah, type B, you've got some procedural hoops to walk through, but type B is probably, is more popular of the two.
Other questions, Doug?
How often have you seen cities in Texas who are already at eight and a quarter percent convert some of their eight and a quarter percent to a type A or type B?
There's a lot of cities that change. I've seen a lot of sales tax elections where, when the street maintenance sales tax got passed a number of years ago, a lot of changing there, and today, you can have a joint ballot. Previously, before a bill got passed, I think in 2009, that sometimes you'd have to have a separate ballot, you know, one, do we want to do away with the, let's say, the sales tax for property tax relief, and then, as a separate ballot, vote on type A or type B. Well, the voters might say, yeah, let's do away with the sales tax for property tax relief, and then, they say no to the type A or type B, and so, you're out. Today, you can do it as a joint ballot proposition. So, a lot of communities kind of switch, you see that quite a bit, be it, you know, type A, type B, sales tax for the street maintenance, you know, sales tax for property tax relief, see some communities doing a crime control district, fire control district, sales tax, and so, yeah, there's quite a few, a lot of changes, especially given this recent legislation that allows you to put it into a joint ballot proposition, makes it a little easier to do that.
Did mineral wells recently vote in a type B corporation, or do you know?
I don't know.
Other questions? The council? Any questions from the audience tonight? Anybody want to ask anything?
Mr. Mayor?
Hey, we're going to charge you for this.
No, 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 this is free.
Okay. No, we're going to charge you.
We're going to charge me.
Oh, you're going to tell us something? Okay, you're not going to ask a question? Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Wagner, if I may, mineral wells did vote that in. We visited with them, Grandberry went up there and visited with those folks, they had all of their city sales tax previously allocated, and they did have that election, what Jeff's talking about, where they reallocated, they took a portion of their property tax reduction sales tax and put it toward economic development. I can't remember, I think our city manager was an eighth cent, was it an eighth wing? I think it was an eighth of a cent.
They take it from the property tax, what part of the...
Right. They had a half cent for property tax reduction.
Oh, I see.
So, what they asked the citizens to do...
But it came out of the sales tax, though.
Right. Just reduce that by one eighth and put that eighth toward economic development. For the Baker Hotel.
So, at least for a temporary period of time, you took some of the sales tax, which would temporarily take it away from the property tax, right?
That's what they're doing with mineral wells. It'll be, it'll be ongoing, I think they said, from what I understand from the city manager, it was limited to $300,000 for the Baker project, and anything above that, as it grew, that money would go to the economic development corporation, kind of the seed money, but they guaranteed 300,000 a year toward that project to the developer.
Do you know what percentage they took on that, mineral wells?
I think it was an eighth of a cent, or out of the half cent.
Okay. Does anybody else, anybody any questions in the audience?
Mayor, I have one.
Okay.
Thank you for inviting us over, we definitely appreciate that, number one. Jeff on, I think it's page six, I don't know, page three, was talking about the board of directors, that time A has got five, and the other's got seven, or vice versa, what's the difference in that?
The question is, you know, why does type A have five and type B have seven? I don't know. It just, for a city of Arlington, you know, the type B was written for the city of Arlington, so maybe there was some input from the city that they wanted a seven-member board, because from the very, when that bill was passed, it's always been seven for type B. For type A, for a number of years, it said five. And then, the city of Port Arthur got a bill introduced into legislation, they wanted to reduce it to three. And then, while it was going through committee hearings, somehow, it got changed to at least five, and went, so it went in the opposite direction, you know, they wanted to get it down to three, and it ended up being at least five, and that was due to legislative change, but, yeah, I'm not certain, but that is one of the differences between type A, type B. Does that help?
Yeah, yeah, I was just curious, I mean, I think seven's great, you know, more minds, better thinking.
I've got a couple of questions, which one do you want to...
I just want to ask Mr. Ketterman one thing. Y'all are operating a city-controlled economic development company, but you're getting 100,000 from the city, and 100 from the county, right?
Yes, sir, with representation from both of those groups.
And so, that money does come directly or indirectly from the tax money, of course, right?
Of course, y'all have the city budget and county budget, right.
And are y'all here thinking about trying to do an A or B?
I will acquiesce to a city council member, Cal, city manager, the captain, and city councilman Allen on the end.
That sounds like the right thing to do.
I think they're fact finding.
Okay. Any other questions?
I've answered all questions.
Well, I've got a couple. The, yeah, okay, thank you. Well, go ahead, go ahead.
Is there a model economic development corporation, and where would that be located? What do they do to make it a model?
The model corporation, I don't, I think each city would probably claim they're the model, I mean, I mean, there's some that have done a lot of economic development. You know, I'm city attorney, and as mentioned earlier, City of Roanoke, and they've got a type A, type, they've got both type A, type B, and they've done a lot, their population's about 7,500, and they've redeveloped this street, Oak Street, and they've got a Hard Eight BBQ, I think you all know a little bit about that, and they've got some other restaurants, and they've got a Babe's Chicken, and they've really redeveloped that street into a nice area where, you know, people from all over go down there, and it's, you know, they've done a nice job. City of the Colony, I'm a city attorney there as well, we're doing the Nebraska Furniture Mart project, it's a big furniture store, it's owned by Berkshire Hathaway, Warren Buffett, and it's going to, they're estimating probably do 2,000 jobs with that big development and all the retail that goes in next to it. That's a wonderful project. Frisco would say, you know, Frisco has done with, you know, the ballpark for the minor league team, that Stonebriar Mall, now they're doing the Dallas Cowboys, you know, practice facility, that, you know, they've done quite a bit in Frisco. And so, you know, that's, you know, the Metroplex, those are some nice examples.
On the Roanoke situation?
Yes, sir.
Was that money spent on the street improvement, or was that money spent on some type of a business incentive?
There was street improvements, but it was business incentives to get some of the restaurants to go there, and so, it was a little bit of both.
Okay. Sir.
To answer your question of why we're here tonight, the, we're fighting some challenges, even with the county giving 100,000 and the city giving 100,000, that we really don't have anything left to advance, to incentivize anyone from an economic development point of view. So, every year, you know, the budget comes up, so these funds aren't guaranteed, so we're looking for funding sources that would be guaranteed. I'm curious that if you were to pass an eighth cent tax, what kind of revenues would that generate for Stevensville?
Four hundred and something thousand. And I understand maybe 200,000, yeah, that's 400 and something thousand, I wrote that. And I understand, you probably think 200,000 over there isn't enough, right?
Right. And our budget actually is about 270 this year.
What is your total sales tax, if you don't mind me?
Around 7 million.
I did around 5.3, so, an eighth of a cent would be, I think I'd go by, maybe 441,000.
Right.
Okay. Which would be, which would be enough to pay people to work and some money for incentives, you know. Obviously, the more money you got, the more incentives you can use.
Okay. You asked half of one of the questions I wanted to ask, and I would, you know, want to give you time to maybe think about this. Other, other communities that have modeled programs for us to call or to investigate, I think would be very, very helpful to know. You mentioned Roanoke, and you mentioned Frisco, and when you mentioned those, I wonder how much of that is a product of an economic development effort, and how much is a product of location near a Alliance Airport and development that is occurring regardless of what an economic development entity is doing?
I mean, Roanoke, yeah, they do have the airport in the vicinity, so that's a big driver for them. Now, Frisco, I mean, they were a small community, and when, you know, the story is that the developer was going to build the mall, 121 cuts through, north side is Frisco, south side is Plano, and apparently, the story is that the developer was going to build the store, Stonebriar Mall, on the south side of 121, and then, Frisco, with both the type A, type B, offered to provide incentives, and it got flipped to the other side of the street. And so, that started the, you know, the economic engine for Frisco. I mean, granted, you know, that they were on 121, but back then, that was one lane each direction. I mean, now, it's a toll road, but, you know, talking, you know, 1990, it was, it was one lane each direction, but they did have that highway. I mean, just, yeah, there's a number of communities that, you know, do various assistance in different, you know, different ways, to try, try to think of a, I guess, a model, you know, of course, you think of the larger communities, they do the bigger projects, but Roanoke, I think is a good example because they're 7,500 in population, albeit next to the airport, but... But this Oak Street Restaurant Row they've got, you know, that was from providing the assistance. They had Babe's Chicken, that was the only restaurant. And they made a concerted effort to, you know, get, you know, tourism down there and get, you know, maybe a little restaurant row with different restaurants. And so, they made that choice and, you know, backed it up with incentives. And now, they've, you walk down that street, you got a number of choices of where to go eat.
The other thing I'd like to, and you may not be able to speak to this, but you could argue that this could be done anyway. That the tax dollar is already there. Now, the one exception would be the property tax being, you know, rescinded to allow access to more dollars. But let's set that aside for a moment, and let's assume that there's just, just the one, what we have, the one percent.
Okay.
You could argue that it could be done without a type A or type B.
Well, you've got different economic development programs that you could do, be it, you know, tax abatement, you know, abating taxes, tax increment financing. You know, you can do public improvement districts. Very common program would be chapter three eighty, under the chapter three eighty of the local government code, to provide assistance through, you know, a chapter three eighty program. And so, you have that, you have those avenues.
Okay, so what, what do you think creates a difference that would draw these communities to, with those already in place, to go ahead and proceed with a type A or a type B? What's the benefit from a process perspective? I get the dollars and cents, I get the legal aspect, but what's created, and I don't want to give you what I think the answer is, I want to hear what you think the answer is.
Well, I mean, it's, I guess, you know, for some communities or some businesses looking to relocate or go to a community, you know, they'll look to see, you know, do they have the type A or type B? The city of the Colony, for example, they have both, there's only, what, a hundred and ten or so that have both. And I would say, without having, if we only had one in the city of the Colony, that Nebraska Furniture Mart project would not be going there. But they're one of a hundred and ten cities that had both, they had the ability to do it, given, you know, they're located on one twenty-one, you know, they're in the Metroplex, right next to Frisco, they had things working for them.
So, you think, excuse me, you think that corporations are using that as a screening mechanism to find towns?
If they're looking to relocate, you know, they usually come to the city and say, you know, you know, how can you assist us? And, you know, they know about tax abatements, and they know about TIFs, and, you know, public improvement districts. But type A, type B is something that's unique, I mean, it's only in the state of Texas. You know, you've got tax abatements, TIFs, in a lot of states around the nation, but type A, type B is different. And so, somebody looking to relocate, you know, they'll take advantage of that, that sort of incentive.
Okay, that, what, you just said right there something I did not know, that, because a couple of our manufacturers here in Stevensville actually outsource or produce products that are, that are... They're supported by corporations that are outside the state of Texas, so that's a, that would be an incentive, I guess, to...
And for that statute, it does talk about creation or retention. If it's, you know, I've seen in some communities, they're looking at moving. And then, the EDC or the city comes in and say, hey, what if we do this and the other for you? Will you look at closing the plant in, you know, California, you know, versus here? We'll provide you some incentives. And that's been a deciding factor in keeping the plant open in Texas versus, you know, somewhere else.
All right, two more, and I promise I'm not with any questions, but could you speak some to the, to the relationship with other corporations? For example, our chamber has a C six, I believe. Our Steadco currently is a C six. And when, if a, if a third corporation stands up, how do those interact? What have you seen happen in those cases with existing corporations?
Sure, in smaller communities, I've seen where, you know, you may have a chamber of commerce slash EDC office, you know, the executive director wears both hats. Where he does both, the EDC may provide a level of assistance with the chamber financially to fund it, for the chamber to do promotional activity, to advertise. And so, in some communities, you know, the EDC has become, I guess, helpful in financing the chamber a little bit to do economic development programs, usually, you know, marketing activity. Foundations, what I refer to as a foundation, those were prior to the legislative change back in eighty-nine, which got the four A tax first implemented, or the type A tax. That you had a lot of foundations prior to nineteen eighty-nine, with nineteen eighty-nine and thereafter, as a number of cities adopted the type A or type B. You see the foundations, in some communities, the foundations are still there, and they serve, they're, you know, a level of assistance. But then, you also have the type A, type B, providing, you know, the sales tax revenue to provide assistance. In some communities I've seen where the, you know, the foundation kind of goes away, because the type A, type B has the revenue to provide the assistance that's needed. And so, but there are communities out there that have both, and there's communities that have all three. And so, it just depends on, I guess, you know, the funding mechanisms in place for the chamber and the foundation. Because, you know, the four A, type A, type B, they've got that sales tax revenue stream for their funding.
The last question, you kind of piqued my interest on, I guess, slide eleven, which talked about development or construction of housing facilities for public state colleges. And I'm asking this question not specifically to what happened there, but your explanation of that may help. You've mentioned several times in your presentation that legislation is offered because a community wants to do something that hasn't been done in other locations. And so, I'm curious if there's any thought or discussion out there right now about how either an A or a B can be used to help communities like Stevensville, Nacogdoches Canyon, that are, that are looking to support a state, you know, university through either conjunctive funding or other types of collaborative efforts?
Sure, I mean, it is limited. A number of years ago, the statute said you could assist with educational facilities and learning centers. And there, a lot of communities use the type B's sales tax revenue to assist with libraries.
Okay, go ahead and finish answering it that way. I want to, I want the answer to look in both directions.
Sure.
Like the state being able to infuse dollars locally through the type B, and likewise, the city being able to support.
Okay, and so, that got removed back in two thousand and three, that ability to assist with education. Subsequently, you know, statutes have gotten added back in to assist with universities. Well, I guess on that same number eleven, I guess on page fifteen, I'm looking at the type A list of projects. That second-to-last bullet point says you can do primary job training facility for institutions of higher ed. If they're gonna do some sort of training facility and it's a primary job employer, you know, the EDCs can provide or pay for that training facility for institutions of higher ed. But then, you also have this one provision for, again, the way it's written, it's limited to basically the Port Arthur, I want to say Lamar University, I believe, that you can assist with dormitories there for that, for that particular university. There's a sunset provision on that particular statute, it expires in four years. But for educational purposes, yeah, you can assist with, you know, primary job training facilities for an institution of higher ed. You could also, I guess, for type B, there's the career centers, provided it's not in the taxing jurisdiction of a junior college district. The term career center is not defined, and so, you know, if it's gonna assist with a career, it's on taxing jurisdiction of junior college district, then you could provide that as, you know, a level of assistance there for that career center.
All right, so I said I was gonna ask two questions, right, two more, I was gonna ask one more.
Sure.
Can the type A receive private funds?
Can type A or type B receive private funds, sure.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Quick question, Mayor.
All right.
In a scenario in which a type B, EDC, contractually comes to an agreement with the private industry, and they set benchmarks. For example, fifty thousand square foot building, you know, two hundred jobs, and the benchmark of when those things will be completed. How is it handled, for example, if they didn't meet their benchmarks and only were able to hire a hundred and fifty employees instead of two hundred? How's that handled?
Sure, what you would do is put into the performance agreement, what I would call an event of default provision, that, you know, you specify, you know, if you... It can be structured any number of ways, you basically with the EDC and the business agree to. Let's say it's a five-year program or a five-year contract, you might have it in increments of twenty percent. If they default in the first year, they repay a hundred percent. If it's default in year two, it's eighty percent. And so, you could structure it any number of ways, but you typically write it up, you know, as far as event of default, that you give them notice, they've got a certain number of days to remedy the defect. If they don't remedy, then the contract's terminated and they owe the financial assistance back. Now, if they don't pay, yeah, you're looking at litigation to go after them, to recoup the monies that were provided. But, you know, I've unfortunately had to deal with, you know, both sides, where we've had, you know, a couple of cases where we had to litigate them. But we've had instances where they recognized the deficiency and they repaid it. And so, sometimes it may, you know, it could lead to litigation.
Thank you.
Mr. Moore, thanks for being here.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
My family lives in Plano and Lewisville, so I do that drive quite often. Two questions, pretty simple, the first one, to get this provision on the ballot, would it just take a majority vote of the council specifying the rate and the time?
That's correct, basically, you'd have a proposed ordinance, and then, just, you know, put it on the agenda to approve the ordinance, a majority vote.
Second, can you give us some examples of cities or, does the concept work where you have an economic development corporation that strictly utilizes private donations? Does, have you seen that concept work in the state of Texas?
EDC, no, I haven't, no.
Really?
I mean, just where they take the private donations, I have not.
Other questions? Okay, one more.
One more, I brought the last one. In your experience, what is the best use of funds that you see to create jobs, let's say, forty-five to eighty-five thousand, call it a mill pass type of job? What was your best use of money, how do they spend it to create those jobs?
The question is, how, what's the best example of creation of jobs?
Non-retail, non-restaurant?
Non-retail, non-restaurant.
Manufacturing, let's say manufacturing, for example.
Manufacturing, we've had a number, I guess, you know, the McKinney area, in the city of McKinney, just with, I guess, Rafeon, it's a manufacturer, and they've created a number of jobs. It just, usually, the best use is for a manufacturer to come to town, because that brings new dollars into the community.
What incentive do they provide to Rafeon? Will he give you X dollar amount to do what?
If I remember correctly, it was based on the number of jobs created, you know, will provide a financial incentive based on the job creation numbers. But, I mean, yeah, the best economic development is manufacturing, because that's gonna bring new jobs to the community, get those new wages, they're making a product, they're exporting it. And so, that's, you know, the best use, but retail has been very good, you know, in a lot of communities, and it brings, you know, the people to come shop to the community. And that creates, you know, new sales tax revenues within the community as well.
Did you have one going there?
Okay.
I'm kind of like you there, I've always got one.
Yeah, yeah.
What do you do when a city doesn't have their own industrial park? And you're putting money in, two hundred thousand a year, and we have no control, we've got a, I call it an industrial park, it's owned by one guy, and the price on the property goes like this. What good does it do to take that pair of money, if you ain't got a place to put these people?
Well, I mean, what a number of EDCs have done, the question is, you know, you don't have an industrial park, or, you know, a lot of EDCs will, you know, they generate the revenue, and they might build a spec building, or, you know, to, and then try to recruit somebody to come to that community. And, you know, they've got the building ready to go, they, you know, they market it, and then, you know, eventually, they get the right person that they want to go in that building. And so, that, you know, a lot of EDCs do that. Now, I will add, if it's a huge project, which requires bonds to get issued, that the Public Finance Division of the Attorney General's Office will want to know who the end user is. It becomes problematic for them to allow bonds to be issued if you don't know who the end user is. But if you have your own monies and you can put that up to, you know, build the box or, you know, build that building, you know, a lot of EDCs do that.
Isn't there grant money you can give to EDC to buy your own property?
I'm not aware of grant monies for, for EDCs, they may be out there, I just haven't dealt with them.
I was forgetting, we went to one, I can't remember what the girl, the lady said. I thought she said we could get up to a million dollars to buy property or...
That could be, I'm just not familiar with it.
Okay, I want to come back to the question that Mr. Hogan asked about privately funded EDCs working. And I don't want to disagree with the answer you gave, but I want to, I want to, and I'm not bringing this up because I disagree with anything that Mr. Hogan was asking in that question, but do you consult with private sector EDCs?
When I was at the Attorney General's Office, yeah, I'd get calls from the, I'll call them foundations, sure.
Okay.
Currently, yeah, I just represent cities and type A, type B corporations.
Okay, so you don't, you don't deal a lot with, like, the Tylers of the world that have a privately funded EDC? They have a type B, but they also have...
No, sir, no.
Okay. Well, let's talk about Tyler for just a second then. Because Tyler has a type B, is my understanding, and they also have a private sector EDC chamber.
Okay.
That have some sort of partnership, and I don't know what that is yet, but they have it.
Okay.
Do you know of any other examples like that, where the type B is functioning, according to Tyler, which I talked to at the Texas Municipal League Conference two weeks ago? They use their type B for what are traditionally type A, type A work, to then support the private sector EDC. It's a partnership that they have, does that sound like it's just two completely different corporations to you that are just working together?
That's what it sounds like, and, yeah, I'm not familiar with, you know, foundation, I guess, EDC working currently together. Yeah, and I'm not familiar with the Tyler example.
Okay, all right. Okay, anything else? For anybody? All right, well, let me just conclude then with a couple of comments, and I'll keep this brief, Mr. Hogan, so just for your benefit. I hope that the citizens of Stevensville are encouraged with tonight's discussion, and I just want to relate to everyone that, and I want to thank the council for us being able to, to, you know, sit together and talk about what, what we need to be considering in these, in these decisions, instead of just, just racing to a conclusion and saying, well, now, let's just try to make this work. I mean, what we're in here is in a process of what I would call discovery learning. We're trying to educate ourselves in what's possible, and then, you know, our duty is to the citizens of this community to ensure that we put policies in place to help this community be successful in the future. And I just want everybody to know that the council is committed to this, and I also want to, want to share with the community partners, some that are here tonight and some that are not. I feel very strongly, as the mayor, that we've got to continue to work together in this collectively. We don't know what the final structure is gonna be, but I'll guarantee you... We don't know what the final structure is gonna be, but I'll, I'll guarantee you, it will be better together than it will separately. And I'm not saying that we've got a, a definition by saying that, but the participation of, of the city with the county, the chamber, Steadco, Tarleton, and Ranger, collectively participating in this decision process is gonna help our city council make, make the most informed decision, and I think ultimately, in the end, have the best decision coming out on, on the backside of that. So I would encourage us as a council to have, to continue to have those discussions. Jerry, I know in the Planning and Development Committee, you know, we, we possibly need to maybe have a, a meeting here in the not-too-distant future to just talk about structure. And I, I want to encourage us to do that sooner rather than later, with Steadco and the chamber, and maybe include Tarleton and Ranger in the room to say, you know, how should we structure ourselves? And what, what, what ideas do we have, now that we know this about the, the tax piece? And, you know, we can certainly, that's a whole separate line of, of discussion that we need to have within the Finance Committee to talk about that. And I think we all know that there's, as we heard tonight, that we've got a window of opportunity in May, and a window of opportunity in November, and then in May, and then in November, and, and so I say that in that there is, there is a, there is a clock that we can, we can look, we can work toward. So with that, I want to thank everybody for coming tonight. If you did not get a copy of the printed material, just contact Cindy tomorrow, and she can provide that to you. I want to thank Mr. Moore for coming tonight, and for everybody in your participation tonight. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. It's moved by Mr. Dean.
Thank you.
Saved by Mr. Hogan. Those in favor? All right. Meeting adjourned at seven oh four. Thank you.